Okay, good evening. I see our numbers have thinned out a bit. I applaud those of you that are still with us. And if everyone will take a seat and -- I feel like I'm in a classroom and look at me and be quiet. We'll get started. We have three candidates with us. Traditionally, League does not invite candidates in unopposed races just because of the time constraint and to get the information out that the voters are most interested in. But we have a unique situation in Richland this year, and that is Dory Gilmore is on the ballot, and she is running against someone who is also on the ballot but has withdrawn from the race, but his name will still be on the ballot when people get it in the mail. And because of that, we thought it was important to at least give her a chance to present her case to the public. And so we have given her a combined opening and closing act. And I might clarify, the person that withdrew from the race has moved out of the state, but people could vote for him. And because of that, we thought it was important for her to have a chance. Normally, we would ask him to send in something, but since he has withdrawn, we did not do that. So we will begin our opening statements with Dory, and then we will let the other two candidates for position six do their opening statements. And we have given her three minutes, so she doesn't have to start and then come back for closing. Okay, Dory?
Thank you so much. I'm just going to introduce myself, because my biggest hurdle is letting the voters know who I am. So I'm a native Richlander. My husband's a native Richlander. My family's been here since the '60s. His much longer, actually. I grew up on McPherson, and when I was growing up in Richland, we had so many opportunities. We had a Science Center in the Federal Building. We had a huge public pool. When I was growing up here, we had a children's museum. We have 58 parks in Richland, and we have so many things for our kids, but we are missing chances. Once we got rid of the old committee senator and the children's museum, we have never replaced that. That's been a pit in the heart of our city for 15 years. I was part of the first graduating class of WSU Tri-Cities Enology and Vitticulture Program back in 2004, and I have the unique experience of being part of the wine industry in Washington State. And I think we need to hop on the opportunity of our brand-new wine science center. We just opened that this year, $7.5 million building. And I think we're, as Richland, need to look for opportunities in the wine education field and use that to make our city the head and heart of Washington wine country. I have three kids, a seven-year-old, a five-year-old, and I'm missing my three-year-old's birthday today to come here, but she's kind of understood. Mom had to go do something. And my kids, I want them to have opportunities in the city that we had, that I had. And I want the city council to reflect the people that live here. And currently, the city council is not made up of people like me, stay-at-home moms, citizen advocates, people who are interested in keeping green space. I'm a trail runner. I'm out there every day. I see a lot of you guys out there every day in the parks with me. And I think that perspective needs to be shared in the city. And I think we need people like me to serve on city council, so that we have those opinions, so we have a different chance to see where our city could go. I have young children. I've lived here my whole life, and I just want to see the city improve and grow. One of the things that I've been doing since I've served on the Arts Commission the last four years is helping to improve the Uptown. We've got a grant to mural the Uptown, and we're working towards muraling all the Uptown. Right now, there's only two vacancies in the Uptown, and they're looking at revitalizing the backside of it. And I think we could do something with that, really make the core of our city beautiful. We have, from John Dan Plaza to the Uptown is only one mile, and if we could revitalize that core and improve on it, people wouldn't need to worry about changing, getting out of the city faster, because they would stop and shop and see art and enjoy our community. And that's what I want to see. I live in North Richland, and I love where I live. I live right by Leslie Groves, and I want people to know, okay, I'll stop. I could talk a long time.
And she was very willing to answer questions. It was a hard call. But she will stay for the rest of the meeting, and if anyone wants to talk to her after we're done, she's more than willing to talk to you. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we will move to the two candidates for position six, Terry Christensen and Donnie Lansman. And we will start with her opening statements of one minute. And again, by birthdays, it was decided who would go first, and Terry chose to go first. So you'll make the first opening statement.
Okay. Well, first, like many of the school board candidates, I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters and the city of Richland and everybody who was involved to arrange this. We don't get many opportunities to try to have talks with the general public, so this is really good. Personally, I was raised in Richland and have lifelong personal and professional ties in this community. My wife, Rosa, and I have four children. They all went through the schools here. They're still here. Now we have seven grandkids. They're all in Richland and Richland schools and being raised here. I have a business degree from Central Washington University, and I spent about 30 years of my career out on the Hanford site. But overall, I have over 35 years of finance and business management experience, and that's both commercial as well as out in the government. I retired from the Pacific Northwest National Lab in 2011, and at that point, realized, you know, that I would have enough time that I could go ahead and try to be an effective council member. And I ran for council and was elected to a four-year term in 2011. I've always believed in giving back to my community by volunteering. I've been involved with the City of Richland Tourism Committee when it existed. That's since changed. I've served as an officer of Tri-City Girls Fast Pitch for over 20 years. I still coach to this day. Right now, it's 12-year-old girls. While I was there, I also was president, I think, for 12 years of those 20-some years that I was in that group. I'm a representative of the Visit Tri-Cities Sports Council, and I've been a trustee of Richmond Rotten Gun Club. I spent four years on the Richmond High School bomber boosters. So it's always been a passion to me, and it's always been a belief to me to always give back to the community, and I think it's a strength. During my last four years in the city council and 10-plus years on the Parks and Recreation Commission here in Richland, I developed an excellent understanding of city government, policy processes. You can't put that stop up. I'm not done. I've got much more to say. Anyway, I'll just have to squeeze more into my closing statement.
Well, hopefully, maybe some of the questions will let you address what you wanted to. And we will then hear from Donnie Lansman and his opening statement.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and all the people here. I think our political process is very important to this country, and having challenged races are a big step towards forming governments that are going to create a better society. When I look at Richland itself, I grew up here. In 1977, my family moved here, and I'm a graduate from Hanford High School. My career did take me out of this area, but I longed to come back here, and about five years ago, I did. My children are in Hanford High School as we speak. One graduated last year, one is graduating this year. I also have a child in Chief Joe. I have a lot of experience in policy writing, policy following. I've worked in compliance all of my working career. I have also worked a lot in Olympia/Washington passing legislation for citizen rights. When I look at Richland, I have very big concerns with our budget accountability. Currently, we have $134 million in a principal debt. This debt is going to carry on until my grandchildren are born and are of the age of reason. We also have a problem with transparency in our government, and this is pretty evident that by 47-minute average city council meetings, including city council meetings that are less than eight minutes long, that happened just this year. We don't have corner-to-corner representation in our city. We have five councilmen that live up in the Badger Mountain/Milos Springs area and two that live virtually are neighbors in the core of Richland. And I think that we need to improve this system and have a ward and district plan and then at-large positions, minimal amounts. We also have issues in this city that I think a lot of the citizens aren't aware of, such as the rivershore is controlled by the Army Corps of Engineers. So when we want to do something in Richland, we have to do extra payments. We have to do extra studies in order to do things such as moving stirrings to a back of a parking lot. The city has great agreements, but these agreements do not exist for the citizens. And finally, I think we need to really work with the Department of Energy to make them take some responsibilities for our infrastructure. Thank you.
And thank you. Dory is leaving us, just to move slightly. Let me, oops, get out my city council questions, but we do have some from the audience. And the first one I'll ask, because there were two on this same subject. And it deals with Richland contributing to the Benton County court system. And I will read one of the questions and add in a little bit. "The city of Richland pays a large share of costs of Benton County Court for jailing people for their inability to pay fines. The city's cost for this is around $500,000 per year. Instead of just punishment, would you consider asking the courts to adopt practices that will decrease recidivism and increase likelihood of successful reentry into the community? Is there anything else you could do?" And one person cites an NPR investigative report that found Benton County Jail is operating as a debtor's prison. So I guess they want to know your opinion about Richland's connection to the county system and what you might or might not do to change it.
Okay. Well, as probably everybody's aware, you know, it's not affordable for the city of Richland to run its own jail, and it only becomes affordable at the county level for the cities to be together and work with the counties to provide jail services. The actual decisions about what's being called, what do they call it?
Debtors' prison.
Debtors' prison. Is actually not something that's decision that's really at the city level, so it's not within city government. If there was a consensus of the citizens all coming forward and council would deal with that, then we could support a letter, a discussion with Benton County, but that's really trying to, you know, influence a big part how the judicial system itself looks at it. So it's not something that we really control, but like anything, it's not necessarily within our decision to make. We can support one direction or the other, but the most important thing is make sure that this is really what the people want. What is the alternative, is what I would ask you, is if you've broken a law and the judge has assigned a fine to you and you can't pay it, does that mean that you are just going to release that person? And so it's kind of like, you know, there would have to be some kind of an argument made that really made it make sense.
Okay, thank you. And now Mr. Lansman.
Well, I think that this is a systemic problem that permeates throughout our society, and I really don't think it is a city council issue. Of course, it is in the interest of our city. And it doesn't actually, the question doesn't actually address what type of crimes we're talking about, but of course, we have a, we do have a system in this country where the jail system has become a business. And there is some cyclical, some cyclical nature of the fines and this debt, this debt imprisonment. And I think that the city has a responsibility to work with the court system, because it is our citizens that are going through the Benton County court system. However, it really is not a decision or a policy that can be made on the city council level.
Okay, thank you. We just got a new question up, and it fits with another question we have from one of our members. And we will begin with you, Mr. Lansman, so you can be thinking hard while I read this. And I will let you choose. "One of our members expressed a concern about both pedestrian and car safety on George Washington Way with continued development in North Richland and more potential traffic. What might be done to help ensure pedestrian safety while crossing the street and lessen the chance of car accidents?" Now, this person is going the other way and wants to know about the congestion on Swift and the bypass and Dupertail on the bypass. So I'll let you either address both of those areas or the one you think is most important.
I'll try to address both of the areas. First, in regards to pedestrian and car safety, I think we, as a society, we keep looking to the government to make these decisions for us, and I think those are personal responsibilities that we have to take. Now, perhaps we can lower speed limits, or we can create overpasses, we can create different types of crossing, but that isn't really the problem. The problem is the individual responsibility to the situation. As far as the bypass, I really have a passion for the bypass, because, you know, the situation in Richland with our traffic at two times during the day is caused primarily by Hanford work, and the Department of Energy needs to be engaged in this mission. We have a bypass that does not live up to its name, and that is, that is a very big problem. We can talk all we want about repairing or doing an intersection on George Washington Way, but until we get to the core root of the problem is how to get the Hanford traffic in and out and around Richland, especially since as, as the Hanford area has changed, the workforce has changed, where they live has changed. We used to be a craft workforce, and now we're more of an engineering workforce. People are staying in the area, so they're buying homes rather than renting homes. So we have to engage the Department of Energy in that. I believe one, a really good plan would be to either relocate the bypass or sink the bypass and put the city-level streets, city-level, eye level.
Thank you. And Mr. Christensen.
Okay. Well, both of these are, of course, are looked at, I think, all the time by city staff, city council, and they're always part of the discussion about what is going to be done. As you know, we did, out of the state legislature, get partial funding to put the Dupertail Bridge in. We have to figure out a way to find about another $10 million to actually get that bridge in. I'm optimistic that within the next two, three years, we'll actually get that under construction. That will, in itself, I believe, do an awful lot to alleviate. A lot of that traffic is starting to congest out there. When you look about where all the people are coming from, most of the people that are coming down the bypass are coming down George Washington Way in the Pacific are doing it by choice. You know, they're, they're all connected to Stevens Drive out before into the North Richland area out there, where they could be on the bypasses if we could get that traffic to flow quicker. I think the Dupertail Bridge will do a big part to try to alleviate that. I'm not sure I'm going to get this into the minute or a minute, and she's probably going to lift that up in a second, but also, we have also started to look at, you know, George Washington Way and what you, what's that down? Come on. I shouldn't have reminded her, should I? So, but anyway, we started looking at George Washington Way and specifically at the Winko area, and there is a high incidence of accidents in that particular intersection and trying to figure out what's the best way to go, to rapid real, real fast. We are connected to the Department of Transportation there about, you know, they have the park just before it comes in, so what we do in there actually has to be a coordinated effort. But there is still ongoing work and a study being done about how to try to mitigate that intersection there or how to calm traffic somewhat on George Washington Way. Sorry about that.
He wants to make it better. I should have, since I combined two questions, I should have given you an extra 30 seconds, so I apologize.
Actually, I don't mind. If I can say it in two minutes, and he needs two minutes and 30 seconds to say the same thing, it's okay with me.
I have two more questions from the audience. One is more detailed, and we'll take that one first in the premise of the question. "I was told that the sewer system put in on the east side of Claybell Park was planned and installed before the Hayden Homes had purchased the property. Taxpayer dollars were spent for this project while a citizens' group was trying to raise money to purchase this property for wildlife, for a wildlife refuge. What are your thoughts on this?" And we'll start with Mr. Christensen.
I'm going to make you read the question again. It was really pretty long. Make sure I address it.
Okay. Pay attention. I was told, and I can let you read this if it would help, because I am, I know it is hard to absorb all of this. "I was told the sewer system put in on the east side of Claybell Park was planned and installed before the Hayden Homes had purchased the property. Taxpayer dollars were spent for this project while a citizens' group was trying to raise money to purchase this property for a wildlife refuge. What are your thoughts on how that all transpired?"
Okay. Well, it has been a big point of contention. Everything it has to do with Amun Basin in there, and it goes all the way from the sewer project going in and also Tap Teal's efforts to try to raise funds to buy the property in there. We can't necessarily go in there. If somebody owns property and somebody follows all the law, short plats that go through all the permitting and everything, it's really, you can't come back and say you don't have a right to do, although you followed the law all the way through. So you can't do that, and the best you can do is try to mitigate what goes in there. The sewer system went in, and it's my understanding Hayden Homes specifically had not had that land, but it's my understanding that was already in private ownership, and it was already short-platted out to where, you know, the people who invested money did it with good heart and trying to do everything correctly about how to do that. When the sewer line went in, the contractor had problems, destroyed some habitat, was not rehabbed very good, and we're back in there on another contract. It's actually a long-term contract to try to rehabilitate that. Hayden Homes was good enough to come back in there and actually push some of their buildings back away a little bit from the Amun Basin to go in there, so that they're trying. And actually, Hayden Homes offered that land up if they would pay it, even though what I understand was a reduced price, that they could do it, and the Tap Teal organization was not able to do the fundraising to come up with the money.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move to Mr. Lansman.
Well, I think we need to actually examine how that happened. In 2005, there was an agreement for these homes to go in. There was an agreement to put in a road called Rachel Road. It didn't take into consideration the habitat that was up there caused by Amun Creek. A lot of people's contention is that's an unnatural creek because it's caused by the runoff for the KID. It wasn't addressed initially, and these agreements were made. So the work started, and the Tap Teal group came in and said, hey, wait a second. We want to save this estuary. There's some nature preserve here that we have to consider. But the city made plans to do this without full disclosure and without full public input, and that's why the situation happened. What the city did to correct it is academic. It's after the fact, but the, the cause of it is a plan, is planning that is, doesn't have the forethought to the future. And this is one of the big problems that Richland has and one of the transparency issues that we have in Richland. Things are happening behind closed doors. Agreements are being made, and they're being carried out, but then when it gets down to it, it wasn't done through the right procedures. It wasn't done with the right notification. And they're moving ahead regardless of plats that were there, regardless of plans that were on the table. The issue is that Richland prematurely gave permission for this to be carried out. So we can deflect it all we want, but the truth of the matter is, the city council of Richland and the management of Richland messed up, and they need to take ownership of that.
Okay. I think we'll ask a connected question to that that the League prepared, and it's, "How important do you think it is to preserve open space in the city and surrounding area, and what should the city's role be in such preservation?" And you get to go first, Mr. Lansman, and you address some of those things, but if you want to elaborate a little more.
Well, okay. So we have, we have to create a balance between our environment with nature and the needs of the people. So in order to do that, it's not up to a city council or a city management or a group within the city. It's up to the citizens, and it's up to the stakeholders to get together, sit down, and come to the agreement of what needs to be done and what's acceptable to all the groups. And until that happens, when we talk about development, we can't just move ahead. And what's happening in Richland between our industrial, our commercial, our retail, and our residential growth, Richland has failed to meet the infrastructure needs of the growth, because the overall plan is not there. And if it is there, it is in constant flux. You know, plan, execute, adjust, not plan, adjust, 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 and execute, and not execute and then start planning. It's plan, execute, adjust. And Richland is not doing that. Clearly, it's not doing that.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Christensen.
Well, I guess somebody that's not very well-connected doesn't know the amount of time and everything that goes in to try to do exactly that, is to plan those things out and look at it and, but to go back to the core of the question about open space, you know, I spent over 10 years in the Parks Commission, and I can guarantee you that anything that's identified as public parkland or anything like that was highly, highly protected by that organization to where, you know, there was no inch and in on it or anything else. Whatever we had is what we had. And I think, you know, the city of Richland has worked really hard in doing that. The conflicts only seem to come up when there's a piece of shrub step out somewhere in the country that are on the fringes of the town, and it comes up, and that somebody wants to look about trying to develop it to there. So you, you know, the, the city's only option in that case would be, is if they're following the law and the rights of the person who has that property, you can't violate that right. So the city would have to find the dollars to try to actually purchase those properties. And obviously, we can't, you know, we don't have the money. The city is going, and it's growing, and the infrastructure needs are large. And we have a capital improvement plan that's about that thick of projects that we were trying to figure out how to fund to try to stay ahead. And it is really, really difficult when there is so much to be done. So to me, yeah, I want to protect that open space.
Thank you. We have a simpler question, maybe. I don't know if the answer will be simple. "Would you support further discussion of allowing pot sales in Richland?"
You know what? We are a government by the people, and so what we would look to do is, we would have to have the people come forward and say that it's really someplace this city should go, that they really want it here. When we had public hearings on it, and we were talking about it before, we locally in the city of Richland, I can't recall one Richland resident ever coming forward and speaking that they wanted to have marijuana sales in town. We had lots of citizens, and we had lots of church groups that were, that did come and speak out, and their voices were heard. And so at that point in time, we tried to, you know, you elect us, you decide who sits up here and does it. We're listening to you, and that's what we were told. Is it a dead issue for sure? It's not a dead issue for sure, because, you know, it is a, you know, Richland municipal code says it, and that code could be changed if the environment changed the other way. And all of a sudden, everybody here in the audience raised their hand and said, Terry, we want that. Well, there's not quite enough out of 53,000 here to do that, but, but that's what it would be. So it's not a permanent decision, but it is a permanent decision, at least to the point about what we have in the Richland municipal code. We did look very briefly about the funding they were trying to supply, and the funding really doesn't necessarily make it worth to buy you off, and that's how I look at what the legislature passed. You know, you get a small amount of money if you'll pass it in your community, and if you don't, you don't get none of that small amount of money. So I didn't like how it went through the legislature. I think everybody should have got that money, because it's throughout the state, and we already have to deal with it.
Thank you. And Mr. Lansman.
Thank you. We've kind of gone down this road a couple of times. We've had prohibitions in this country in the past that didn't work. And we also had a, an initiative in the state that legalized alcohol being sold in stores, and tax money was promised to the cities, and it isn't coming there. And now we have this initiative of the people that says that marijuana is legal and is a legal enterprise. Now, we're putting a prohibition before, before the businesses have even been established or being asked to be established. I think that's wrong. We are a government of laws. And the marijuana sales, I'll give you just an example. In Colorado, it's, they also legalized marijuana, and it's been highly embraced across the, across the entire state. And $34 million was collected. If it wasn't last month, it was the month before. And 3.4 million of those dollars went to support education. Now, a lot of people say, oh, wait, it's marijuana, and that's bad. We do the same thing with cigarettes, and we do the same thing with alcohol, and those are things that are socially acceptable. And now the people of the state have said, this is socially acceptable. So the law supports these businesses being in place. It's simple as that, and I think we need to uphold the law. So when it comes to Richland, and I think what we need to do is look at an active So when it comes to Richland and I think what we need to do is look at a active regulation of where these businesses can be located and how they can operate. It has created great success in other, in other towns and I think it could be a beneficial thing to Richland tax-wise.
Thank you. And because we've ended with you and you're going to do the first opening, I think we'll stop with the questions and go to the closing statements, I'm sorry, and give you one minute, just one minute to summarize your thoughts.
Put your hand on her there for a minute, would you? Okay. All right, well, I'd like to reiterate that I'm running again for the Richland City Council because I really care about the quality of life in Richland and I guarantee you I'll continue to work very hard. You know, the city actually is in better shape financially than it's been for a while. And continuous work with the council, with the city manager about trying to squeeze budget has been very successful. We've been allowed to take additional taxes. That's passed by law without consent of the people. The City of Richland, in the four years I've been on the council, is not taking that tax increase on property. It's been my honor to serve you for four years. As the City of Richland continues to grow and prosper, the most important thing I can do is be an advocate of supporting the overall quality of life here. I would again like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me to come speak with you and to all of you for coming out tonight. I truly care about this community and I hope the information you've gathered here tonight has been helpful. Please remember to mail in your ballots. I would greatly appreciate your vote. And if you'd like to learn more about me, I have a website, christensenforrichland.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move to Mr. Landsman.
I think from the bottom up in this country, our political process has lost its luster to the people and they have little confidence. I want to leave you with some numbers. 134, that's how many million dollars that Richland has in cyclical debt. 213, that's how much revenue that Richland has in taxes. It's more than the other cities per capita. 56 is the percentage that, of our revenue that comes from city services. 47 is the average minute of our meetings for city council. Seven minutes and 37 seconds, that is the shortest meeting that they've had. It was this year. Two is the number of city council members that are from the core of Richland and they're nearly neighbors. Five is the number of, of city councilmen that live in close proximity in Meadow Springs. Seven, that's the number of city council positions we need to restore to the citizens. That's the only way that we're going to make Richland right. And I believe we need to elect a citizen or two to our city council immediately. Vote for Donnie. We can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you to Mr. Terry Christensen and Donnie Landsman. And just stay here for just a second. I had, just stay just a minute. Oh, they're going to shake hands. Isn't that nice?
Of course.
We're lucky to live in such a nice community. I want to thank all the candidates for agreeing to be here tonight. It takes a lot of time and effort and commitment to run for public office and then to serve if elected. I want to thank the audience and I encourage you to encourage everybody you know to become informed, to watch if they can, to go onto the websites. Most of the candidates probably have websites. League has a site called 411 where some of the candidates have shared information about themselves and answered some questions. I want to especially thank one of our members, Kay Autumn, who has been the main person to get all of our forums organized. We're going to have two next week, one in Pasco and one in Kennewick. Ballots will be mailed out next week and you should receive them by the 16th. If you have not received your ballot by, let's say, the following Monday, I would contact the auditor's office and the elections department and check and see if something's happened. And in addition to the local candidates, there are going to be statewide two initiatives on the ballot and four advisory votes. And I encourage you to become informed on those also. The Voters Pamphlet isn't, or Voters Guide is not going to be out necessarily until the 20th. So you may not get it right when your ballot comes, but wait so that you can at least read about some of those issues. I especially thank the people that submitted questions. And if you remember correctly, Benton County was the worst county in the state for returning their ballots in the primary. So hopefully, we can do much better in the general election and so on. You know, kind of shame people if they don't vote. It's, you know, you don't have to be real mean, but try and encourage them to vote and make sure they get their ballots in on time. Because informed and involved citizens are really the key to government, good government at all levels, local, state and national. So good night and thank you for coming.